Meeting started here. If you'd all please stand and we'll do a pledge in a small prayer when we start with our meeting. I guess Chuck, if you'd like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please bow our heads. Dear Heavenly Father, please shine your grace upon us. Help us to make good and wise decisions. Help to keep our meeting peaceful and cordial. And please protect us as we all travel home. In your name we pray. Amen. All right. Like to welcome everybody here to the Wells County Council Regular Session Tuesday, September 3rd, 2019. First thing we have on the agenda is several minutes. We've got minutes from August 6th, which was our regular session, August 13th, which was budget, August 15th, budget, and August 20th, budget. I'm assuming everybody received their minutes electronic list? If everybody's, is there any, I guess the first, is there any deletions or additions that anybody's seen on them? If not, we can roll it all into one motion if that's favorable.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay. We have a motion to approve all minutes. Have a second. All in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed? Motion carries? Jim, did you?
Yeah.
You good? Okay. Didn't see you there for a second. That's kind of quick. All right. We've got transfers. We've got transfers from Circuit Court, or excuse me, Superior Court, Circuit Court, Community Corrections, and Health, and also Community Corrections Grant Two. What is that? What is the Grant Two part of it? Do we?
This Community Corrections is in the general fund.
Okay.
The Grant Two is the...
The grant part of it, obviously. I didn't, okay. I didn't know if we did the grant side of it. Okay. I guess, does any council member have any questions or concerns over any of the transfers presented? I don't see anybody. Would you like to go ahead and put them all into one motion here for transfers? Somebody like to make a motion on the transfers presented?
I'll make a motion to approve all transfers.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Say your second.
We have a second. All in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed? Motion carries on that? Seven oh. All right. Into transfers. Appointments. We got Scott, Wells County Sheriff.
Evening.
Evening.
Evening, everybody. The monthly income and the activity reports. Currently, we have, as of about a half hour ago, we got eighty-four inmates in jail. That's about ten, eleven less than what we had this morning.
Oh, wow.
So, thanks to a lot of them that went to court today and those that may be sitting behind you that helped me out some of those numbers.
Okay.
So, eighty-four total inmates. We have twenty-one pretrial, Circuit thirty-two pretrial, Superior seven DOC and eleven F sixes currently in those numbers. So, I don't particularly need to make any direction towards the activity report other than the generated income. I think the DOC number was not in before we printed this morning. So, would you want to fill that in? The income for August was nine thousand two hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
I'm sorry, nine thousand two...
Nine two eight seven and fifty cents. Yeah. That's missing there, so. And I must remind you that those numbers do not include anymore since July, starting in July, correct, Karen?
Yes.
The F sixes, because that was that payment. We're getting the one month payment which you've already received. So, these numbers will only reflect Department of Corrections fees if we're blocking outside of F sixes.
Okay.
So, those numbers will be lower.
Lower then, okay.
I just want to remind you that that's why the numbers are lower.
Gotcha.
Compared to, if you look at the numbers from last year, sort of like, you know, we're at twenty to thirty thousand. So, that's what those numbers reflect. And they will be that way from now on, so. Other than that, I reported to the Commissioners this morning, we got our last, as of today, we got our last two boilers replaced. There was a jailer, there was five of them. So, we've been replacing one a year. We had enough funding left over in our current budget to replace the last two this year. So, those are done. So, they're up and going, firing away. And so, no need to worry about that anymore. Good for anyone in the short term.
Sounds good.
Other than that, I don't have anything else to present, so.
Sounds good. Thank you, Sheriff.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Scott. All right. Next is Community Corrections. Play phone back, shall we? Step forward. For the annual report.
Doing good. I'd like to start off by apologizing. I thought that the annual report got emailed out in the middle of last week. I had talked to Lisa, but we sent the measures to you folks. We were having the last tower upgraded to Windows 10. It was my administrative assistance tower. In the morning, she had emails in the queue to go out. IT came in and grabbed her tower to do the upgrade for some of the stuff coming up with the Odyssey system that will be put on at the end of January, beginning of February. We had to have all Windows 10 platform on our towers. So, we were doing the last bit of installing the new licensing software for all of that. And I apologize. I have two extra copies. If anyone doesn't have a copy with or would like a copy?
As I say, I received mine.
I received the link as well. I read it. I was talking to Chuck earlier. Chuck, God bless his soul, found two typos on page twenty-five where what happened is this year, since we're going to a calendar year, DOC decided to not do their annual report format. And every year for the last four, five, or six years, they keep changing the format. I made a conscious decision that we were going to go back and he said, "Do your own format and submit it." So, I went back and chose out what I thought was our best layout for giving the information, giving it concisely. And I gave you guys a lot of extemporaneous information you don't need nor makes sense to what you folks do. Because if you read some of the DOC reports, they ask a lot of questions about stuff that none of us really cared to know about. So, you know, even streamlining it, it was a twenty-seven page annual report. I apologize. I know it's a little dry in places. It's statistics and information, you know, going through it. Our, you know, we have our agency information when we started, what we've done, how we do it with the board, and contact for all of that. Then if you get past that, we get into our organizational chart, mission statement, vision statement. These are all state mandated things that we do every year, that we update every year through the board. Our code of ethics, strategic plan, and then you get into our goals and objectives on pages eight through, I don't know where it goes. Seven through eleven, and summary of information, which is on page twelve. So, we give you what all we tell the DOC we're going to do that they measure us against for our site audit. Last November, we had our site audit. We scored a ninety-one out of a hundred. We did, I would say that's exceptionally well because the state doesn't believe in giving anyone high marks unless we were on it. We were on the top side of the average. I think that's testament to what we do and how we do it, how my staff perform their duties. So, you know, again, these are all evidence-based practices. I'm sure Vicky's had her share of evidence-based practices over the years. This is what the state's moved to. We were one of the first guinea pigs in nineteen ninety-six, started out as what works, and then went to best practice. And now it's all been to evidence-based practices. So, they kind of used us as a living research lab to see how this was going to work in a governmental setting. And as you can tell, it really is looking hard at tying the Indiana Risk Assessment Tool, which we use to assess risk to the community and to, for their offenses, as well as what we're doing with the Mission of Services Programming Supervision. Chief Probation Officer Greg Wark and I talked this afternoon as he was leaving for his annual conference in Southern Indiana. And we're working on a new sanctions and incentives program that will be paralleled in both agencies. We're going to meet in October and we're hoping to have that summer first part of 2020 so that it is mirrored in both agencies. That way, we can use it for the courts as a way of escalating, de-escalating without going to a jail bed and tightening up the sheriff's population beds out there. So, you know, as a whole, we're always all working together trying to figure out how we can best utilize the resources we have that are limited. So, as you go on further and you get past the goals and objectives, you get into our training stats. These are all the trainings that we do with all staff every year. These are things that we routinely do, we got to have to do our jobs. And as you can see, there's a lot that's required for any of my staff to do their positions. I like that because I think it gives a better answer to you folks of where our time's at. Part of our time is in our continual education credits, standardized training, CPR, first aid, things like that. So, you understand that, you know, there's a lot that goes into what my staff's required to do when they do their day-to-day activities.
Each staff member go see that?
Yes.
All those hours?
Everything you see and we've broken it out by the person and what they've done and what areas they've trained in.
That's all required, is it?
Yes.
CPR and...
Yes. Because say if we're doing a home check and we have somebody that has a heart attack, you're covered by the Good Samaritan law, but I would want my staff, my officers to know exactly what they're doing, how to do it. That way, they know and we don't make a mistake. That's just common sense response. And it also cuts back on liability issues in the county.
Does probation do that too?
I don't know. You'd have to ask Mr. Wark.
I was just curious.
So, I'm not sure what they do. I would guess so, but I don't know. Then you get, you get into our breakout by felony misdemeanors, the numbers, what we were serving, offense levels and all that. Like I said, it's very dry stuff, but it gives a good, a good view of what we're dealing with in the community, I think, on as far as offenses, felonies, misdemeanors, juvenile cases. We have a section in here for juveniles received for this time period. And, you know, it's, it's amazing, as you guys have seen and asking about the juvenile detention cost. It's a better expense to hold them locally on home detention than it is to have them sent to a secure detention facility where your cost is hundreds of dollars a day. So, we try to be sensitive about that too because that's a cost we don't want to have run up and eat into the total operating of the rest of the county.
I assume there are times when you would send somebody there?
Yes. Yes, there are times. We, Circuit Court does a good job in probation of trying to figure out who is in secure detention and who we need to bring back on home detention. That way, we, they transition them back into the community. There's oversight, there's guidance. We work with the juvenile probation officers on what the case plan is and discuss, you know, are they going to school? Do they have any mental health, substance abuse counseling they need to be attending? Are they going to it? It gives a way for us to assist probation in making sure that case plan for reentry from secure detentions being followed and that they're performing to their expectations.
So, what's the youngest person that would be in the...
The youngest I've ever had was ten years old, I believe.
But they're at home detention, but then what, they're allowed to get to school, ride the bus?
Well, they're still required to go to school. That's, that's part of the requirements, so.
I just wondered what they would do at ten years old that would...
It's been a while. The average is usually about twelve to sixteen. That was the youngest, and that's off the top of my head.
Sure.
I'd have to look at my, my stats on that. But, you know, it's amazing when you listen to the police radio, and I'm sure Sheriff Holly will also understand this. The calls that the officers are going out on where teenagers and especially the younger ten to twelve, thirteen-year-olds are just being totally combatted with their parents. It's sad. You know, I'm pretty sure I'm going to hear those calls here, like, all of us were raised in families where we didn't do that. And it's, it's an unfortunate state of affairs where we're at, I think, right now. And hopefully that turns and we get back to a more normal, optimistic view on that. So, and I checkpointed out one thing on page twenty-five or twenty-six. When we were doing this, DOC, as I said, told us to come up with our own report this fall. We did not include the county general funds on the budget, grant expenditures and fees because we're sending this to DOC. And it was just an oversight. I've made a note to include it in next year's format for you folks. And we'll adjust accordingly. On, on the section below that, we did a ninety-one day snapshot of what the cost is for home detention, DOC in jail. So, that's something that, you know, we're going to use this as our main platform for going forward through the county council, county commissioners, advisory board. I feel more comfortable with this and I think I clear a thing. One thing we did add, that I did do this year is I went back and we looked at our mental health and medical cost impact. We've been doing it since around two thousand. Judge Goshorn asked me one day, he goes, "We allow these people to go out for doctor's appointments, dental appointments, counseling appointments, substance abuse treatment. Do we ever take a look at what that cost is?" I said, "No, Your Honor, no one's ever asked me that." He says, "Well, can you do this?" So, I set forth and created a spreadsheet. And over about three years, we dialed it in. I went to our software management company, who does our case management software. They built this into our systems for us. And it's something that I have urged DOC, Department of Corrections, and other counties to start doing because I think the medical and mental health costs in our local jails is astonishing when you look at it. And when you take a look at that page, for the last year, it was five hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, five hundred and twenty-six thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars. Medical mental health. And that's self-insured HIPAA two point oh, Medicaid, Medicare, you know, we break it out into all those that they have. Employment insurance and what they have. If you go back five years, the cost of billables that we track was three million, eight hundred and eighty thousand, seven hundred and five dollars. And if you go back ten years, it was seven million, one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars. That was medical mental health of people on home detention that we track the physical billables. This doesn't violate HIPAA. Or someone asks, I always get that question, "Does this violate HIPAA?" No. These are the billables and we are, we have them sign a release so that we can get this information. If we're allowing them to go to these appointments and these treatments, I think we should know what, what it is. And it's another way for us to verify that they actually are getting treatment. That way, we know it wasn't, "Well, I just went to a doctor, the doctor gave me a no." So. I would like to thank Mike. Mike stopped in last Monday. We had a really nice hour and a half conversation and I appreciated his insights and his direction. I want to be here to work with you guys. You know, that's one thing Mike can never talk about. As a department head, if I know where we're at going into budgets, I'll look to find things where we can make concessions on that. You know, that, we're all on the same team here. We're all here to make sure the taxpayer who's a citizen of Wells County is getting treated right and fairly. I'm a taxpayer who's a citizen of Wells County, so it impacts me too. So, you know, I, I don't want to take advantage of myself as we do this. And so, you know, anytime, and I told the Commissioners this morning, anytime you folks would like to do a rile along, come in and observe, I welcome you. I've always said this. I've had council commissioners, commissioner members over the years take advantage of it. And it's, I think Chuck, you came in with Jim Van Winkle. And I think that that was, it was very nice for you to actually see the hands-on, daily operation of what we do and the nuts and bolts of how we do it. It's very isolated. This weekend, I was on call, I drew a short straw for the holiday weekend, and I had a mental health case who, on Sunday, I had to come out. They weren't taking their meds as they were supposed to. And this is my first extreme bipolar diagnosis I've ever had in my department history that I knew of. And we found it out when she came into a check-in last month and she had just totally disconnected from everything. It was shocking. I've never seen somebody like that unless it's a total mental breakdown. And we had a critical intervention technician officer, ED, come over, talk to her. She wasn't a threat to herself or to the community, so we weren't able to do anything through that. We finally got her to agree to have an EMS unit respond and just check her out because of my concern was she might walk out and we're walking into Main Street because she just wasn't there. They convinced her to go over to ER and Lufton Regional sent her to St. Joseph's Psych Division. They kept her for seven or eight days, did a very good job of diagnosing, and diagnosed her as a manic bipolar, which I, you know, you hear, in our industry, you hear of manic, you don't, it's, it's kind of like a albino leopard. You just don't seek that often when you do it, catch you off guard. But she had an episode this weekend where she wasn't taking her self, one of her self-opioid treatment medicines properly or at all. And she loses track of time and location and, you know, she just, in the middle of a rainstorm, was walking around a park near her apartment. We located her, I talked to her, she, you know, I said, "Have you taken your meds?" "Well, maybe in the last day or two, no, I haven't." So, that may mean three or four days. Her spouse gave her meds she's supposed to take daily. So, you know, we were checking on her throughout the rest of the holiday weekend to make sure she was building those levels back up. So, she was functioning at her best. So, those, you know, that's just one scenario I gave you as the officer that responded. Believe me, it wasn't fun going out in that rain Sunday. But, you know, that's a lot of what we do and a lot of what our caseload's starting to come, or the medical mental health issues. As, as our populations are aging, we have more and more of this. I know that Judge Antrim's court especially, we see that with pretrial services for home detention and executed sentences where they aren't really appropriate for us to put in jail, jail commander Thompson. Because they're limited on how they can treat these people. Some of these people need home-based counseling services for going to Art Center, Bone Center, and Fort Lane or here with Lufton, or the St. Joe Psych Services. So, you know, we really work with a lot of these agencies in making sure when we have these folks, we're getting them on a course of treatment and making sure they stay and maintain while they're on home detention. That's the other benefit of home detention. It gives us the capabilities to make sure that we can fulfill their recovery process and hold them accountable so that they're, if they're on, I don't know what you're, the anti-opioid shot.
Vipro.
Vipro and abuse, you know, those different treatment programs, that they're doing those. And that saves all of us a lot of headaches. It saves deputies, police officers, police responders, having to do more Narcan issuances. You know, it, it's amazing what the drug culture currently is doing to the community. I'm hoping that shifts too, folks. I'm optimistic in this job. And there's a lot of days where it makes you wring your head and go, "I'm not going to lose that optimism." Because we are seeing a shift. Right now, heroin and cocaine is not being as prevalent in the last six, seven months as methamphetamines are. Meth is back. It's safe, it's a perceived safer drug, whereas with heroin, cocaine, with fentanyl being mixed in. And we've already heard, heard this conversation, I'm sorry. But we have offenders that will seek different drugs to maintain that addictive quality and that level of response in their nerve depth. So, they'll jump from, the days of having somebody that was just purely an alcohol case, I miss, you know, I mean, you could, alcoholism, you could work with better. Now, they'll jump from alcohol to drugs, back to alcohol, to marijuana, all the way up to fentanyl. You know, it's, it's kind of like spin the wheel and see what they're going to jump to next. So, we're always trying to make sure we're staying on top of current drug trends, with the current culture of what's happening so that we can have things organized and ready to respond as they happen instead of being totally reactive. We're trying to be proactive as well and doing our job. With that, do you have any questions? Hopefully, this will give you guys a good insight into our operations. That's why I went back to this format when we started pulling, pouring through the previous report forms we used. This is a combination of two others that I thought brought everything together that we really could give you guys a window into what we're doing annually.
I appreciate this, boy. I gave much more information than what we've had in the past, so.
Certainly.
Well, and that's why I'm going to do a diversion track from the Department of Corrections reporting process and do something locally again. There's a little more work for us to do in-house, but it's needed.
Sure. Any further questions from that? Appreciate it.
Thank you all very much.
Thanks, buddy.
Thanks. Have a great evening.
Do a second. All right. Next, we have the Economic Revitalization Area Ordinance. We have Roy here as the, I guess, the representative for this evening on this information.
I have a revised ordinance for your separation from Troy. I wasn't here last time. Did read a newspaper article and talked to Chad. For county council to grant an abatement. One of the qualifications for abatement is that the property has to be in an economic revitalization area. And the city of Lufton, I think this is going back in the eighties, former partners wanted to be, you back in the city of Hennepin for a long time. I remember him telling me, the city just, or just going to say, the whole city's an economic revitalization area. So, they didn't have issues with each applicant having to come before city council or county council saying, "We, we would like to seek an abatement. We need you to declare this piece of property as an economic revitalization area." And so, when the, in Heartland, RNC, came before the Commissioners, Chad and I thought, "Well, this seems ideal for that kind of a declaration because they're not buying an acre here or two acres here, but rather wanting to extend internet service to their service area and maybe even beyond." And so, that led to our talking about it and drafting this resolution. I'm not here to say abatements are good or bad or different. I'm just saying, I, I think that they're here and I think we're competing, they're competing with other communities for that, for jobs, for infrastructure. So, that's the spiel is that step one to even be able to consider property tax abatement, whether it's Heartland or the next... whether it's Heartland or, or the next potential industry coming in. We don't always know where they're going to go. But by doing this, you're taking one step forward in designating all of the unincorporated areas of the county as an economic revitalization area. The resolution doesn't commit you to any particular scale, any, any time period. And in, uh, in talking with Chad and doing that, uh, we said, well, we'd like to leave that as is so that council can determine that on a case-by-case basis. Somebody might want a particular week, I, I would like, you know, like a hundred percent for three years, or I would want a 10-year phase-in or whatever. So this doesn't lock you in to any particular scale or, or method of granting an, an abatement. But rather, all we're doing is saying, the whole county is open for business as far as being an economically revitalization area. And then whether it's Heartland or the next business coming before you, that stands on their own merits. On what they pitch and what they propose, whether it's real estate or equipment or whatever. And, and you've got that freedom to decide on a case-by-case basis whether to grant the abatement and on what terms you grant the abatement.
But Roy, in, in the past, if you go back in history, for example, a couple of different companies that are in unincorporated areas right now, how did they, how were they chosen as?
A good, a good point.
I mean, I'm thinking like Frankel Electric, I'm going to, I mean, that's a unique situation, but just, hey, there you go, that perfect example, yeah.
That was already declared an economic revitalization.
That, that piece of property from the prior owners, is that how they?
I can't, I can't tell you when, that's my understanding.
Cause I don't remember going through a lot of formalities when that happened.
That's my understanding, but it was done on that piece of property, not, so if they bought another acre and want to expand their plant.
They would have to go through the whole process. Okay, okay.
Roy, you used the word updated when you handed this out. Is it updated somewhat from?
I updated it because, uh, in, in looking at it, it said, in two places, it said, shall be determined, uh, by, instead of be, I changed, two words I changed and dates I changed. Because the, the draft you saw before was for adoption on, I don't know, August 6th. Obviously, it's not August 6th. And then the next date is, uh, this, uh, resolution is a preliminary. You're, you're declaring this, but then the statute requires that notice be published. And the notice has to be published from once in the newspaper, not less than 10 days before your meeting at which you determine whether or not to make this permanent. So those are the dates. I've changed the resolution date to today, and then the notice you publish in the newspaper would say, I'm assuming that your next meeting would be October 1? All right, well, uh, please again.
No, no, you got, well, the one that was sent to me was, yeah, I was going to say the one I've got was right, yeah.
I've got it for the notice of adoption that's published. I changed it on those.
You should tell me.
So Roy, if, uh, let's say somebody was wanting to build a factory in southern part of the county.
Yes.
We would normally just make that the economic zone, right? The uniqueness here is because they're putting cable all over the county, we have to do the whole entire county.
I, I think their situation is a little unique and that you can't lock it into, I mean, and they don't.
So this is really, which I'm getting at, this is, even though this is for the whole county, the county's still open for business. We, we would just independently approve that piece if somebody wanted to.
Your question was, if, if a business wants to locate in the southern part of the county, that's fine. It, it's already an economic revitalization.
If we approve this. But if we didn't, they would have to come independently just for that piece of property and where.
And on each piece, you've got to go through this procedure.
Right.
You've got to make a preliminary determination, you got to publish notice, and then have a, a follow-up. Like I said, it's.
So we're taking that, this would take that step out of it. It's not necessarily, we're picking who or.
You've already got the whole county, the unincorporated area of the county declared as an economic revitalization area.
Sure.
So that anybody wanting to come in doesn't have to worry about that. Now, you could say, well, how, how bad a worry is that? Probably not. There's probably lots of lawyers would like to prepare that on a case-by-piece basis and publish notice and this and that. It's just, you've already taken that step to say.
I mean, the reality of it is, so far, if you go through history, really our county area, unincorporated areas have not really brought into, it's usually in the, in the incorporated areas. So they've already done their process. You said city of Lufton went ahead and they've, they've already done something similar to this?
They did.
For the whole city of Lufton?
My understanding, they, they declared the, the whole city.
Now, would that have been part of it for the TIP, to create a TIP district? Did they normally do?
I think that's even before TIP.
Oh, okay.
I, I think that was in.
Cause I think Austin, did Austin go through something similar to this? Just curious.
I, I don't know. They, they may have, but, um, you know, on a county basis, all I know is that Haven, and that was different because they had already.
It's an existing business, yeah.
They came back for a tax abatement on additional equipment.
Yeah, after, yeah, after.
So, so having had one already, they would have already had to have had that piece of property declared an ERA.
So Lisa, what would the, uh, resolution number be?
Two thousand nineteen oh nine.
Oh nine?
Oh nine.
I think it makes perfect sense for us to approve, uh, this resolution just going forward, and there's not an extra step on anything. We still have the ability as a council to approve or disapprove any abatements.
Any abatements that come along.
So that, this is just a step that clears, clears that hurdle.
You're, you're not on any timetable or anything, you phase that in.
Exactly, so.
I would echo this.
So if you're ready for a motion, I'll.
I was going to say, I'm, is there any other concerns or questions for Roy? I mean, at this stage, it seems pretty set forth. I mean, as far as just from this point out, it's not declaring any business, we're not doing an abatement or anything at this stage. It's just strictly that.
You've not approved any abatement, you're just taking that first step by declaring an unincorporated area of the county as an ERA.
Any other questions? Or, it seems pretty practical at this point, I mean, at this stage of it. And this only allows you to go to the next step of the public hearing. So if there is some other things that pop up that we're not aware of that are some different than.
The notice, the notice in the newspaper would give the citizens an opportunity to come in and, and.
Address their que, questions.
I really think it's a good, better idea to adopt, to make the whole county an ERA.
Sure. Any other questions? Yes, I'm done. Do we have a motion to approve the, uh?
I'll make a motion to approve Wells County Council Resolution Number Two Thousand Eighteen Dash.
Well, we're not doing the resolution, are we? Oh, wait, is it?
Well, it is a.
It is, okay, to do the public hearing, to do the public, okay.
And I'll second that.
You have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by raising your hand? Post? Motion carries. All right, thank you, Roy. All right, next thing we have here is, we are going to pause our meeting, our regular session meeting, and we are going to open to the public hearing for two thousand and twenty budgets. We have three different budgets, the Wells County budget, the solid waste budget, and the Rock Creek Conservancy budget. At this stage, we're going to go ahead and open it up, we're going to do each one individually, so if any public, any citizens have any concerns or whatnot. We're going to open it up to the Wells County two thousand and twenty budget. If there'd be anybody that would like to speak their mind on the budget at this point in time to the public?
I, I have to make a statement. Um, I, I personally, this is my fifth year, fifth budget, and two of my focuses coming in here was County Highway Garage and Pay scape. Job classification. And it's my understanding, as it is right now, if we proceed with what we've done so far under the clerk setting, we've got different jobs in different offices that can have a $2,000 spread. A person that's only been here four, four years could be making $2,000 more than a person that's been here 20 years under the same job heading. We've got another department where somebody could be here 20 years, possibly even 30 years, making 25 cents more an hour than a person that's been here less than a year. And I, I still find that wrong, and I still ask us all to try to improve that. And everybody knows where we're at on County Highway Garage, which is no further now than it was five years ago when I came. And I blame seven of us plus three. We really need to put our heads together and get that accomplished. And I'm saying it now because it's budget time. I'm at fault too. I, I've raised my hand. I've, I've agreed with the matrix, but it almost caused more problems. And I'm hearing, I'm hearing from the general public and, and employees, I hope you are too, that we've actually put another wedge in, even though we did approve a raise, but, uh, we're, we're, we almost caused more problems now than what we had before, trying to solve something else.
That's a good point. Again, would there be anybody concerned with the, like to speak on the two thousand and twenty Wells County budget? I guess, have, nobody stepping forward? Well, we can do that af, we can do that afterwards. Yeah, just, cause this is ju, we're not adopting anything. We're just, it's strictly just public, public comments, all it is, so. I guess with that, nobody stepping forward, we're done with the Wells County tw, two thousand and twenty budget? Do we have to do a motion on that? I don't think we do, we put.
You can do them all together, sing, singly, however you usually do it.
Yeah, why don't we do, well, we're not adopting it though. We're not, we're just.
Okay.
So really, we're not, that's pretty much, yeah, yeah, I mean, it's just a, yeah. Um, we're done with the Wells County public comment. The next one will be the solid waste twenty twenty budget. If there's anybody in the crowd that would like to comment on that budget? Going once, going twice? Nobody being here for the solid waste. Uh, the next budget would be the Rock Creek Conservancy twenty twenty budget. I'm not seeing anybody. I see Stacia here. I don't see any, any concerns? I guess at this point. I guess at this point, with no, uh, public, uh, comment on either three of the budgets, we've done our part.
Left it to the public.
Left it to the public, and they can speak their minds, so. We will close the public hearing for two thousand and twenty budget then. And we will be doing adoption of the budget on October the eighth. So that will be coming up then. We will be actually voting on that, approving that budget, so. Okay, um, we're going into other buzzes, or business, Ms. Lane's business. We did have, I had, I think everybody received the email that Jared, um, had commented that we took some, we had reduced the line item for the repair, general repair, uh, by $600 and come to find out he had some obligations for that coming up.
With software.
With software, yeah, and whatnot. So, and I told him, I said, we would address that at this meeting. I see no problem in putting that back.
I don't either. I mean, it was, it was what I had mentioned, and I said, I know it was for something, and I couldn't remember what it was.
So, I mean, it was, uh.
It probably should have its own line item.
Yeah, just the name of it, the name of it kind of makes it sound a little strange, but yeah, but, uh, I guess, uh.
So six hundred to?
Just be adding $600 to that lot, general repair.
Putting, putting what we cut in back out.
Back into it.
Putting back what we cut out.
I think it'd be good if we had a motion to approve that, just so we have official action. Do we have a motion to approve the six hundred? Do we have that motion? We have a second? All in favor, signify by raising your hand? So we'll put that back into the budget then. I'm going to let Lisa take it from here on the probation. Or prosecutors, I'm sorry, prosecutors' office.
Yeah, he wanted his, um, two.
His secretaries, right?
Yeah, yeah. They, they now currently make $750 more annually than the rest of the girls in their departments. One's a, and four D, and the other one's in pre-trial deferral funds. He would like to increase it to $2,500 extra annually.
So those funds are not part of general?
Correct.
So it's, um.
It's from incentive funds in pre-trial defer.
And they, do they work in those? Um, um, do they do extra? I'm just trying to remember what he said. They do?
He said they were, they were busier.
Busier, is what I, I, I'm trying to.
Cases that he dealt with at that point.
Yeah, without him here, but it's, it's still, yeah.
Chuck, what's your take on that?
It's not our money.
It's somebody's money.
Technically, it is taxpayers' money. It comes from the state.
It's, it's, uh, you can't call Ms. Lane's income, right? Is that called Ms. Lane's income?
It's reimbursement.
Reimbursement funds, so.
What would he spend, what could he buy with that money if he didn't give it to those staffers?
It stays in that fund.
Pencils, paperclips, desks, chairs, copy machines. Then when he doesn't have it, he has to come ask for more.
And here again, the job heading is secretary. Administrative, secretary, not clerk.
What do you guys think?
How would those positions compare to, is there any other comparables that you could draw a parallel to and say, well, if you put them at 2,500, then they're 2,000 above any other person in the relative job? Would that do that? Or would it put them in line? There, there has to be some explanation for, that's a big job, fair to say.
I would say so, yes.
So my first notion is, is he trying to get some equalization, or they're so good at what they do, it's, that's a, that's a nice raise on top of the raise that we already gave. So because technically they are $1,000 anyway.
I think they have a few extra responsibilities from the other girls.
Or even education accreditation of some kind. I, I.
Yeah, I don't know.
Some.
I'll just let you know, we will, this will never take action until we do the salary ordinance. Cause that's when we set the dollar amount to it, which is done before January to start that, so. I'm not trying to push it off, but again, it's okay, just to remind everybody, we're not making that decision right now, but that money would stay there. But we do, it would be nice to come up with some conclusion of what we're.
I personally think that you open up a huge can of worms in every department. Oh, well, she does this and this, and this person does this and this, and this here, and they need an extra $1,000, and they need an extra $1,500. I mean.
It goes on and on and on.
It depends on your, I mean, how were you raised? Well, I work a lot harder, and you know, I mean, people, oh, I work a lot harder because that's the way I was raised. Or, you know, I think I deserve more breaks, or, you know, I mean, I just think that you get completely out of sync. And are you going to give somebody a raise because they work harder than this person or they, I mean, I, I appreciate every person and everyone that works so hard. However, I think when you start categorizing people and start giving them different raises, you either, you either open it up and do a matrix of some type, or you don't do that. Because I, I think that gets a little hairy. I mean, do you go to the, the person who works in, say, the treasurer's office?
I think you need an auditor manager.
Yeah, I mean, you know, your girls do different. In, in the auditor's office, they all do different types of jobs. It's one job and more important.
We don't have incentive funds that I can use.
Which is, which is what makes the, begs the question, is that the right way to do it?
Do it.
Honestly. You know, again, you make the reference to, well, all right, someone's picking these people to get more. And then once that's set in stone, it's set in stone, no matter who's the next prosecutor for that matter.
I'm trying to remember, what did we do last year?
We increased it from 250 to 750, or 500, 500 to 750.
Five, so two hundred, so $250, $250. And he's asking for 700?
No, 2500.
Twenty-five?
2500.
So what do you guys think?
I see a nod like this. I see a nod like this.
I don't like the.
Yeah, I don't.
It just seems like a pretty big.
It's a big gym. I think we can all, we all agree, it's a big, big gym, so.
Compensation thing a couple of years ago, right? The, the people you work with, were they wanting standardization among all?
One person was. That was, I, I wanted, I wanted a complete.
Were the, were the employees wanting that too, so that there would be a comparable, that this quarter more an hour thing? Was that, was that something that you were hearing from the employees, that they were wanting it to be standardized so that a clerk in one office made the same in the others, and?
I was hearing a complete review was warranted from an outside source.
See, I think Ball State did our last one, I believe. I think, we went outside, I believe, I wasn't here.
Several, several, Ball State was.
Yeah, they did.
Several decades ago.
Yeah, it's been a while, yeah.
And I, I am still an advocate for that, but I don't think there was stomach for it on council.
I mean, I've not heard one bad comment from the employees.
And I have.
I haven't either.
I haven't heard anything.
I haven't, yeah. I have, I have, yeah.
Well, that's how the library vote, you didn't hear it, it didn't happen.
If, if there are two jobs that are exactly the same, I do get what's understood, and years of service are the same, everything else is the same, which everybody could argue, you know, I get that in my office, I hate titles in general.
Yeah, I know.
Because everybody does a little bit more somewhere here or there, and that, that makes it very hard to standardize it, but we do need to start doing another study to look at it. It may not be a bad idea.
Only going outside, I got from out there, was they appreciate the $1,000.
Yeah.
That's common.
So far, I haven't. So what do we want to do here? What do we want to think of?
I don't want to do what he wants to do.
Yeah.
I don't know where in between, but I don't want to do what he wants to do.
I didn't know that.
It was in, when he had presentation, he asked for, and it was in his proposed budget, we just work all that away.
Because we.
He asked again.
Well, we kind of bypassed it, basically, so.
Why isn't he here to present his?
Well, we, it wasn't, I don't think.
Yeah, I was just entering things and solving.
Yeah, it seemed as something we needed to, needed to handle here, so. Any numbers? What do you guys?
I think we need to leave it like it is.
Leave it like it is? Leave it like.
Don't be sorry.
Yeah.
That's the way I feel.
I feel that way too.
They're still getting a raise plus a coal.
I can go with the way it is.
Yep.
Does everybody else? I guess at this stage, we'll make, well, I'll go ahead and make official action, let's